I call to order this meeting of the Sherburne School Committee. Today is Tuesday, October 14th, and we are meeting in the Dover Sherburne Middle School Library. The time is now 6:30 PM. Period. First on the agenda, community comments. We have provided a virtual link for those who wish to make a comment but for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person. Are there any community comments? Nobody on the line. Okay. Juliette, are we waiting for Sonia in person or should we jump into you guys?
You can jump into me. Sonia is traveling for work and she has been stuck at the airport.
Oh, okay.
I think she's on a flight.
Okay, so before we jump to you, since we do have Juliette joining us tonight, we can vote to move the CSA co-president's update up on the agenda. May I have a motion to move the CSA co-president's update to item number three on the agenda?
May I have a deal, Alyssa? Moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Oh, a second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Anything.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, so up next on the agenda, we have Pine Hill CSA co-president Juliette H. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I hope you can see me. Well, if you can't, that's fine, but I'm gonna just read for my update here.
We can see you.
Yes, thank you.
You look great. Oh, and of course, I just, oh, here I go. Well, thank you so much for having me here to give you an update on the CSA and listen to what we're up to over at Pine Hill. My name is Juliette. I'm the co-president of the Pine Hill School CSA along with Sonia Aronaza. Sonia's traveling for work. So we have a full and diverse board this year for the CSA and we're very excited about the year ahead. And I just want to share some recent activities as well as a few initiatives that we have for this school year. We, well, we had a successful gala last year under the leadership of the former presidents, Irene and Kara, and so we're in good financial stead for this year. So far this year, we've hosted two events. We hosted the Back to School Ice Cream Social with the student body and their parents. It's always a very popular event and we are happy to host it. It's a great way for everybody to connect after the summer. The Pine Hill 5K was a few weeks ago. That was very well attended. We had, I think, over 350 participants. We have a new team leading this event, Sarah Cheeben and James Coughlin, both with kindergartners. Our fundraising was on par with previous years and we gained a few new sponsors this year, which was great. In terms of financial allocations for this year, we have allocated our $20,000 to a Broadmoor partnership, which continues to be an invaluable resource for the students and teachers. Some of the grades have already completed their Pine Hill nature walk and they will be visiting Broadmoor later in the year. We're lucky to be in such close proximity to such a treasure, natural preserve, and we really value this partnership and we're proud to fund this through the CSA. Our enrichment programs for the year are funded and allocated, which include all school meetings, special performances, as well as allocating funds to each grade so that teachers may bring enrichment activities of their choosing. From a management perspective, Sonia and I are kind of approaching this year as a time to upgrade our existing technological infrastructure, to streamline and make a few of our functions more efficient. One of those functions is the calendar. We have designated a new volunteer position on the board and it's the calendar coordinator. This year it is Asha Stracero-Wild. She, her son Henry is in the third grade. She has always had her own calendar sort of available to any parent that wants to see it, and it's a cross between Pine Hill activities and community activities. So we kind of partnered with her and Brandon in IT to link that calendar into the Pine Hill community, or the Pine Hill Parent Square calendar. So we limited it obviously to Pine Hill activities and then we pulled in a few things that parents might be interested in, specifically like the library, those kind of activities. But that's been a big project that we've been working on and it has been kind of uploaded. There's some kinks that we're working out, but essentially we really want to create like a one-stop shop in the Parent Square app for parents to see what's going on at Pine Hill and, you know, peppered with a few things from the community. So that's one initiative. The other, for fundraising, we have been working with Mark as a priority this year. We would really like to create an opportunity for people to donate however and as easily as they can. So we are implementing Venmo. That can be a little difficult as a nonprofit, but we're gonna do it. Venmo this year, as well as Apple Pay and Google Pay, and those will be available on our website, you know, in advance of our fundraising initiative after the new year. But we just really want to create like a very seamless experience for parents and make it as easy as possible for people to donate and give back to Pine Hill, as well as, you know, in addition to these, to Venmo and Apple Pay and Google Pay, there's also things like automatic monthly donations and there's lots of little widgets to kind of make it as easy as possible for people to donate. So we're really trying to move forward with that. And, you know, and as always, we're always looking towards the future and continuing to recruit and entice new parent caregiver volunteers. This year, we've launched an auxiliary committee initiative that will focus on encouraging parents and caregivers to help kind of when they can and what they have. We're hoping this committee will encourage participation among those who might not have time to sign up for like a CSA official role but want to get involved. And we're hoping with our efforts of like streamlining and getting new parents involved that hopefully we might get some people next year that see that the CSA isn't necessarily a huge time commitment and they, you know, we that will kind of load the bench for next year. And those are initiatives and we have, I have one kind of last minute add. One of the vice presidents this year, Melanie Park, she'll be the president next year, she gave, she had a great idea. She's a mom of a kindergartner and she had a great idea for Officer Michael at Pine Hill to have a safety talk with parents about what happens during like a sort of a safety drill at school. And so she is working with Allison Gollingsroot and us and will be announcing that evening coming up, but that's kind of a new thing that just came across our desk and we're really excited about it because I think it kind of creates a new space for the CSA just to be like a resource for parents in some of these areas that are, you know, that might be like scary for some parents and students and that kind of thing. So that's another initiative. We'll have sort of informational Q and A session with Officer Michael at Pine Hill in the coming month or so. And that is really, that's really it. That's for the update. So any questions, I'm happy to answer, but we're just looking forward to a great year ahead and thanks again for having me and allowing me to share more about this year's CSA.
Great. I have two questions. The first is, that sounds great. I always am curious, it seems like it would be such a unique experience, I guess. Unique is the word I'll use for what happens in the school, so I think that'll be really helpful so we can talk to our kids about it. Will there be a remote dial-in option as well for that? Or can there be?
I'm sure there will. Melanie's sort of leading that, so I can ask her, but I'm sure there will and I can make it a little bit easier.
And then my only other question, I've heard a decent amount of conversation amongst the parents around Directory Spot, the lack thereof, a directory in Parent Square, which as far as I'm aware is not working or not turned on. Like, do we have a point of view? Maybe that's a you guys questions, question. I think that's been a really wonderful resource that everyone I've talked to has really appreciated it. So curious if there's a point of view there.
Yeah, I like, I've always liked Directory Spot. The directive we had this year was that we were gonna shift to Parent Square. And then within Parent Square, at the directive, we would not have home addresses. We would just have like contact information. However, I do know that, and I learned this sort of after the first year, like we, or after the beginning of school, that you have to opt in to the directory in Parent Square. So I don't know how easy it is, but you know, if we want to have a separate Directory Spot, I think, given the feedback I've gotten as well, I'm happy to, you know, push that forward. Like, there's no opposition from us in terms of having a separate Directory Spot. I just, that was sort of, I know that was kind of a discussion over the summer and that's where we had left off, that we were gonna use Parent Square and it was not gonna include home addresses, so.
There's like manual lists being created now, just as an FYI.
Wow. Like from teachers or?
No, like from class parents.
Parents, yeah. And is it, what's Chicaring doing or?
Same thing. The middle and high school are doing the same thing. People are starting with directories they had last year and just kind of adding and subtracting families as they've come or left our community. And that's coming from kind of legal guidance, just in the world that we're living in, for a school system to be just giving everybody out addresses is not safe practice anymore. It's not good practice. And so we've unfortunately had to ask our CSA and PTOs to help and to collect in some way, shape or form. So some schools, you know, their PTOs are sending out through Parent Square, just a quick Google form saying if you'd like your information included, please, you know, check this box and give us your home address. And then Parent Square does have emails and phone numbers. I know home addresses are good for playdates and ghosting.
Ghosting.
So the opting in is still something, because my understanding, I thought from Brandon coming out of last year to this year, was everyone would be opted in to at least the email and phone, but it looks like you still have to go in and opt in.
I believe you still have to go in and opt in. And that's to have it in Parent Square.
Right.
So, I mean, as a community, I guess all four schools or specifically Pine Hill can talk about whether or not you want to be pushing parents to do both, or if you just want to streamline it and have them do, you know, your own directory where everything is there.
I see.
For a one-stop shop, you know, to Juliette's point.
Yeah, one or the other.
Yeah.
I don't have a strong opinion one or the other, but I've heard lots of conversation about this. Like, it's clearly a pain point in the community.
Yeah.
I'm curious. It makes complete and total sense, but it does feel like if the CSA or maybe the room parents are the right way to do it, like, I mean, I don't have anybody in here other than the teachers, so I don't know if I'm doing something wrong. Maybe it's just a how do you do it, right?
In Parent Square?
Yeah.
I mean, it just.
We do have, I just want to note, we do have, so Allison Burley was in charge of the Directory Spot last year, and I think if you have the Directory Spot, you can still access it until like November. So she was gonna send out a notice to people that they could download it, but that kind of excludes the kindergarten class.
Right.
Because they don't have access because they weren't here last year. And so I don't know if that's something we could do and then separately maybe have the kindergarten room parents kind of coordinate like their own directory, but I'm not sure how that fits in with the school district guidance. You know, I don't want to be like kind of muddling those waters.
Yeah, I think as long as it's, you know, parents and caregivers collecting the information and we're not just handing over a file, you're welcome to go about it any way that you think is best. And we're sorry to make it difficult. We're just trying to be protective of our students and their families.
Oh, no, I don't, yeah, no, I'm happy to do likes or whatever. I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if this will come from CSA or from Brandon Hall, but even just a message or if I missed it, maybe a follow-up message of like, here's how you would opt in. Like, I guarantee my information's not in there and that is ignorance versus intention.
It's also not that easy. And you have to, I think, do it online versus the app.
I've spent a fair amount of time looking for it in the apps. That makes me feel a little bit better.
It's not straightforward, so if we have to do that, a video or some sort of screenshots, you'd have to like hold hands.
But I would say that, like, we're what, two months in and I've had at least six different conversations with people about like, oh, where did it go? What do we do? How, like, all the things. So it's definitely a pain point.
Juliette, it might make sense just to touch base with the Chicaring president, just to see what they're doing and maybe we can piggyback on that so it's similar, so you guys aren't recreating the wheel from scratch.
Yeah.
That's no problem. Yeah, I can ask, I can ask a Chicaring CSA or PTO.
Great. Well, thank you, Juliette, for all, oh, go ahead.
Just one quick, hey Juliette, just a quick question. When you were talking about donation on the website, are you gonna, is there gonna be an option for donor advised funds? A donation through donor advised?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part.
A donate, an ability to donate through donor advised funds? Like DAFs?
Oh, you know what? I don't know. I don't know what those are. Is that?
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of money in DAFs. My background's nonprofit, especially here in Massachusetts because fidelity's such a big player here. Basically, what you do is you designate money into, think of it like a mutual fund, but it can't be used to make money. It's used only for donation and charity, but you get the tax write-off when you put it into your DAF. So once it's in there, you have to use it on a nonprofit or a charity. So there's just literally billions of dollars sitting around waiting to be given out. So I'd be happy to chat, it's Bill Alfano by the way, I'd be happy to chat if you, if you want to, because we've really taken it strongly at the PMS Challenge and it's, there's a lot of money and it's very easy because no one's pulling money out of their pockets. It's already been designated to be given away.
Thank you so much, Juliette. Yeah, that would be great. I'd love to talk further about it.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
And Denny just found a link from the Dover PTO that says, click here to purchase the Chicaring Directory and there's directions on how to, A, purchase it and B, get your information in it. So we'll forward that to you, Juliette, and then you can work with your team.
That would be great.
What, which one are they purchasing? Directory Spot?
Is it, is it the Parent Square purchasing or are they?
No, it's Directory Spot.
I love Directory Spot.
So I guess they're doing Directory Spot again.
Oh.
But maybe they're asking parents that they have to opt in to putting the information into Directory Spot versus automatically doing it, just so that it's legally covered.
Or maybe not even putting addresses in and just doing it. I miss Directory Spot. Me.
I mean, actually using it.
Me too.
Yeah, it looks like it says, please enter the email you would like to use for Directory Spot account. Yeah, I don't know.
It's unclear.
Okay. So we could do Directory Spot, it's just that we wouldn't get the typical download from the school system.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'll talk to the head of the PTO over there. That's interesting. I wonder what percentage of parents are sort of buying into that?
Yeah.
And if they're using last year's information in addition to it, so that, because we'd totally be open to that.
Well, thank you. And thank you for your efforts for the students and the kids, you know, that's ongoing and it, having been a Pine Hill parent, I appreciate all that you add to the enrichment of the school day and the fact that you're taking on so many more initiatives to improve things. It's a whole nother layer. So thank you for trying to improve the experience for parents and caregivers as well and to streamline things to make life as easy as possible because we know life just continues to get more complicated. So thank you.
Well, thank you all so much. Thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Juliette.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thanks.
All right. Up next is, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's comments.
Okay.
Superintendent McCoy.
Thank you. So updates since we met last. Thank you to Ms. Gollingsroot and Ms. Ryan for hosting the open house in September. I heard it was a great turnout and I love the fact that we've reverted back to having a kind of opening welcome to bring the community together and then doing classroom-based presentations. The night after that, we had our opening of the turf field and we had our first home game and our first football home game on the field. And that was an opportunity for us to thank the Dover and Sherburne taxpayers for the track and the turf, as well as the Mudge Foundation, DSC TV and the DS Boosters for the press box and bleachers. K Array USA, Dad Rusty Weight works for KRA and donated to speakers, which are amazing. And it was also an opportunity to recognize the Dover Sherburne team who's been working on this for three years, including Dawn, John Smith, the principal, Emily and Cam in the athletic department, and Chris Hendricks, who's our groundskeeper. So lots of work, lots of time, and I know lots of efforts on behalf of the parents to get voters out to make sure that we have this opportunity for our kids. So it's amazing. If you haven't seen it, it's top-notch. There's drone pictures now on the internet, I believe, on the website, so definitely worth checking out.
Lights are on, so right now I can take a peek.
But definitely a great resource for our students. And thank you, Dawn, for all of your efforts. That was a huge project. Negotiations. So we've had one meeting so far and we have another meeting of the school committee team tomorrow. And thank you to Becca and Megga for serving on that committee. And then we'll be meeting with the DSEA, the union side, for the first time October 29th. And as there are updates to be had, we will certainly bring them back to you all, schedule executive sessions as needed as well. Aside from that, Juliette mentioned the evening. I'm not sure if it's gonna be a post-all-school meeting, morning meeting, or a evening opportunity for parents and caregivers to learn more about the drills that we have and the resources and security mechanisms we have in place, but we're certainly working with the CSA and Officer Mitchell to organize that. So there'll be more to come. And we'll be doing that at both Pine Hill Chicaring and the region, so offering that for all parents. I just have a sense of what we do to have a little bit more assurance in that we've planned as much as we can plan. And that's it. Happy to take questions about general things and then I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Conklin to talk about MCAS.
Good.
I think the only question I have, and I think we talked to Brandon about it at one point, is as we start to do some of these more parent education sessions, is there an opportunity to do one around technology, primarily younger ages? I would, well, maybe, I don't know. I don't have high schoolers yet, but Roblox, being safe online, like, I know we recently updated our policies for each age for appropriate technology use. Like, I find it really hard to keep up with all the things, so if there are resources, that might be a nice one to bring in over time.
Yes. I know that's been on all of our minds. We've talked about doing short videos for parents and just things you should know. I know that the middle school, and we obviously make it available to all four schools, is working with Brandon to get more information out to younger parents and middle school parents about different phone options and different screening options for parents to use to make life a little bit easier. And then later this month, no, early next month, there is a presentation by the U.S. Attorney General's Office. They had one in the spring and they're having it again this fall, and we're gonna share that information with parents. I attended it and I thought it was very eye-opening in terms of what happens on the internet and, you know, how to keep our kids safe. So we'll start, we'll start tripling out that information slowly. So thank you for the reminder. I don't know if there's anything else, having met with Brandon recently, that's worth sharing or he's still kind of getting us up and running.
The one thing that'd be helpful, it's unrelated to safety, is just how to navigate Google Classroom.
Oh, oh my God, yeah.
I think, you know, just coming to middle school, we have to navigate it too, yeah.
Yep. Definitely a learning curve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, well, thank you. And now we'll talk about MCAS.
Great.
So I'm happy to bring you an update on how our students did in last year's spring administration of the MCAS. So every year, I start off with this quote because it kind of helps frame the way that we talk about the MCAS. So it's by John Hattie, who says, "The major purpose of assessment in schools should be to provide interpretive information to teachers and school leaders about their impact on students so that these educators have the best information about what steps to take with instruction and how they need to change and adapt." So the MCAS is one aspect out of many that our teachers use to make decisions about how they work with students. You can see here all the various sources of data that teachers use in their classrooms and that we use at Pine Hill. So you have things that happen on a daily or weekly basis. Those are formative assessments, an exit ticket, student self-reflection, a check-in that a teacher does. You have things that happen in the classroom one to four times a month. So that might be some written work samples, science journals, student products. You have things that happen quarterly or at the end of a unit. That might be your unit test, common assessments, a project, a test or quiz. Then we have our diagnostic tools that happen two to three times a year, things like iExcel, Dibbles, our phonics screener, our math screener, our Panorama SEL survey. Then again, you have things that happen once a year. The MCAS is something that happens once a year. So it gives a kind of standard measure of how our students are doing. It's standardized that we can see how our students are doing in comparison to other students across the state. But again, it happens in the spring, we get the information in the fall. So in terms of how a teacher uses it, they can look at trends for how their students did last year, but those students are kind of out of their classrooms then. So these other things on our data pyramid here are gonna be the things that are gonna be most useful because teachers can adapt in the moment with a lot of these things rather than an annual test that they don't see until after their students have left them. So with that being said, I'll give you a little overview of what the commissioner said to us about the overall state landscape. So overall, across the state of Massachusetts, in grades three through eight, there was an overall increase of about 3% in ELA in the students that either met or exceeded expectations. They didn't really see any change in math across the state, so math scores stayed steady. Gives you some information about grade 10 at the high school level. Overall, ELA decreased by six percentage points and math decreased by three percentage points. That was the regional presentation that we did last week and I'm happy to say that Dover Sherburne, our ELA scores at 10th grade actually went up 6% rather than going down. So we are doing much better than the state in the trends. For grade five in science, there wasn't any significant changes in science scores as well. One of the things that they were interested in looking at was the impact of Question Two across the state, which makes MCAS no longer a competency determination requirement. This affects mostly the high school level because those are the students that were thinking about it more. It used to be something that was required of them in order to earn that competency determination. But across the state, they saw the same overall participation rate in the MCAS. They did see more blank responses in grade 10, especially on the SA. So the, I think Desi is still looking to see what, if any, impact of Question Two there will be. Again, we didn't see in Dover Sherburne any impacts of that. Again, our ELA scores actually went up at the high schools, so we'll kind of see how, where that takes us at the region.
You're actually number one in the state in English.
I saw.
Oh, wow. That's great.
Some good numbers.
And I wanted to kind of orient you with, you know, when we're looking at the MCAS scores, what are the things that we're looking at? Because there's a lot of different measures. I think by now a lot of you have received your reports in the mail. So what does it all mean and what do we look at? We look at achievement, so that's the actual score that a student gets on the MCAS. So it's a scaled score that you can compare across years. These scores are an indication of how students are doing against the Massachusetts frameworks. They usually stay relatively steady across the years. One of the numbers that we're gonna see tonight is a percentage. That's the percentage of students who meet or exceed the, exceed expectations. So Desi sets those ranges annually. They usually don't change unless there's been some sort of a drastic change in the test. This enables us to compare how one grade did versus last year's grade, so you can look at how this year's third graders did versus last year's third graders. We also take a look, since we're so small, at students who were kind of on the bubble in these different categories to see how close they might have been to jumping up into a different range. And for the purposes of kind of when we're looking through this, Desi considers a meaningful change to be anything that's plus or minus 2%. You can see the bands here of the scores that coincide with not meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, meeting expectations, and then exceeding expectations. In addition to that, we also look at the idea of growth. So this thing called the SGP is something that's important to us. That's gonna compare a student from how they did previously on the MCAS and how much they've grown from year to year. So where some of these other achievement numbers, we're looking at how one grade did compared to last year's grade, this is more of an individual result to see since the student last took the test, how have they grown? So you'll know that like third grade, you're not gonna have an SGP because the students have never taken it before. Desi considers any SGPs in the 50s to be average growth and anything that's 60 or higher is higher than the average growth. Additionally, we look at cohort growth, so how has a group of students progressed as they've moved through the grades? So hopefully, we want to see that fourth graders did better on math, for example, than when they were in third grade. And we want to kind of see that growth of the group as they go from grade to grade. We do a lot of work around item analysis, so each of the tests has kind of big bucket domains. So for example, math, the domains that they look at are the categories, questions into are geometry, statistics and probability, number and quantity, algebra and functions. We look at the connection between questions and the individual standards in the Massachusetts frameworks. And then another part that we look at is the differential between Dover Sherburne and Um, and then another part that we look at is the differential between Dover Sherborne and how the state did. Uh, so we're usually looking to see that our Dover Sherborne students did significantly better on a question than versus the state percentage getting a question right. Um, and finally, we will get subgroup data. Uh, so there's this large bucket called high need students. Kind of a larger inclusive bucket. That's any student with a disability, uh, multilingual language learner and low income students. So all three of those is high needs. Uh, and then we look at the kind of separate parts of that. Our multilingual language learners, low income students, students with disabilities, and then we also look at the breakdown of scores by race. One other note before we get into the Pine Hill scores, um, that I think is really important to point out is that we have very small class sizes in Sherborne and at Pine Hill. Um, so because of that, and usually almost always our class sizes are under a hundred for a whole grade level. Uh, that makes these percentages very sensitive to small changes. Uh, so for example, in a grade of sixty-five students, a shift of five students can raise a percentage by eight points. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind that, you know, when we're looking at these percentages, um, a lot of times one percentage point is more than one student really, not kind of in a larger district where you might have like five hundred students in a grade. So how did?
It's just public schoo- schools, right?
Uh, so how did Pine Hill do? Uh, so I'll give an overview of all the categories and then we'll talk about the specific successes and focus areas. Uh, so we'll start by looking at our ELA scores in grades three through five. Um, here in this chart, you'll see how Pine Hill did last year in twenty twenty-four. You'll see the comparison to how Pine Hill did this year in twenty twenty-five, and then in that final column, you'll see how the state did overall. Uh, so you can see that Pine Hill students, when they took the test last year, did better than the state did. Um, and then below, you'll see kind of a breakdown of some of these scores. So overall in ELA, seventy percent of our students either met or exceeded expectations. That was up ten percent from the previous year, so we're seeing this growth in ELA. And that was thirty percent above the state average. Um, the average scaled score was five hundred and nine. That was up three points from the previous year. Um, sixteen points above the state average, and then our SGP, um, again, Desi considers anything in the fifties to be average growth. Anything above sixty and above, above average growth. Uh, we were fifty-nine point two for growth. Uh, that was up one point from the previous year and twenty-six points above the state average. Um, so we had a lot of improvement in students meeting exceeding ELA and our SGP was very robust.
Are we, sorry, I wasn't seeing any effect of COVID on any of these because it's the third grade kids who, I don't know if they started in kindergarten when I?
Our fifth grader, my fifth grader was in kindergarten or my sixth grader.
The fifth graders, yeah.
My third, my third grade was three when uh, it all, it all went down, yeah.
I guess similar question though, like, do you guys have a point of view on this jump? Are the third graders very bright? Or not the, are the third graders good test takers, I will phrase? Are the fifth graders, last year's fifth graders? Did they struggle? Like, are we as a group improving? Like, how should we be interpreting this?
Yep, I mean, I think part of the ELA progress has been all the ways that we have supplemented our ELA instruction at the elementary level. So when you think about the focus on phonics and foundations in K one and two, I think our students are coming into third grade with stronger early literacy skills. Uh, so we have foundations, we have Haggerty, which focuses on phonemic awareness. Um, so we're doing a lot more work than that, so I think a lot of that is a reflection of the teachers leaning into learning more about the science of breathing in those lower grades. Um, and the fact that these students also were not in school during COVID. Uh, so I think we're starting to see some of the upper grades.
Progression of that moving on. Be interested to see with the middle school.
And I think the data team meetings that happen multiple times a year with all the teachers coming together with the coaches and the interventionists and developing groups and then really having targeted interventions towards kids is helping those kids come up.
That's interesting. How long ago did we start Wynn? Like, has that been relatively recent or has that been in place for a long time?
It's, it's, uh, yeah, I would say within the last.
He was here when I was here, so it's at least four years.
My kids didn't have it, so there, it's in the.
Yeah, I mean, that just seems like such a really powerful tool to get groups of kids experiencing the same challenges. I know we brought it to, or it's been brought to the middle school as well, like, I'm, I'm curious, obviously, maybe it's not impacting this, but um, a powerful tool.
Seven years, I'll have to do the math.
And our Wynn is getting better. I'll talk about that in a couple of slides.
This is fantastic. Congratulations, team. Well, well done. This is great.
So then we have ELA. I will move now to math in grades three through five. Um, so you can see that overall sixty-seven percent of our students remain or exceeding. That's up two percent from the previous year. Our scaled score stayed even and our SGP was fifty-six point five. Um, again, still a healthy SGP, uh, down three points from the previous year. Um, in a moment, I will get to this because I know that people have been thinking last year is our first year of the implementation of the new curriculum. How did these, how might these scores have been impacted by that? Uh, so just hold on, we, we'll talk about that um, in a future slide.
And sorry, can you remind me, SGP is student growth percentage, so that's indicating that some portion of the students, obviously impacted by the small number, did worse year on year than they did the previous year.
Less growth.
They showed less growth. What does that mean? Sorry, do you know what I mean?
It's a comparison, so if a student had a score of like five oh eight for when they were in third grade and then they get into fourth grade and that score goes down from where they were in third grade or, I'm not explaining this well.
Up not as much, right?
It's up not as much.
Okay, so they didn't do five oh two necessarily, but they're not on the trajectory that we would have expected based on their previous year. Okay, I'm with you. Thank you.
Jesse sets for every student based on how they score in one year, they set a target for what the growth should look like in the next year. So the SGP is based upon that projected growth.
Did these students deliver, achieve the projected growth? Okay, thank you.
There we go.
I know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be really careful with my words, I shouldn't do. Task taking is hard. Um, yeah, okay.
And then finally, our fifth grade students take science. Uh, so seventy-two percent of our students remain or exceeding. That was up seven percent from the previous year. Average scaled score, five-ten, which was up two points from the previous year. Uh, there's no SGP since this is the first year that students have taken science. Um, so what are the things that we have to celebrate? Um, our Pine Hill students continue to perform above the state averages. Uh, this gets to kind of that pre-pandemic thing that we were just discussing. Um, in third grade, ELA and math, so third grade, ELA and math, the percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding is now either equal to or higher than where we were before COVID. Um, our fourth grade ELA is now equal to or higher than where we were before COVID. Uh, so that shows, um, that we're seeing that kind of rebound, um, since COVID. Uh, looking at ELA, um, our third graders went up in all four domains of ELA, so in reading, writing, the essay and in language. Um, our high need students in third grade ELA, uh, their percentage of students that were meeting or exceeding went up by eleven percent. And in fourth grade and ELA, their SGP's went up an average of twelve points. Um, so a lot of growth in fourth grade ELA. Um, the fifth grade science in the category of technology and engineering, um, the number of questions that our students got correct went up by sixteen percent. Um, so showing that our teachers were covering those standards really, really well. And then getting to a little bit more analysis of math and the impact of the new curriculum. So I think the good news is that usually when you switch from one curriculum to another, you expect what we call kind of an implementation dip. So students and teachers are getting used to the new curriculum. Standardized test scores tend to drop a little bit. Uh, I think the good news for us is that our percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding went up two percent from last year and their SGP's were in the mid-fifties across the board. So I think that's very, very positive. Uh, you would expect those to, all those numbers to slightly go down. Um, was there any type of media impact? It's hard to tell. I'll say that overall, our percentage of students that were doing well in fractions went up five percent. Um, that's typically an area that our students struggling with fractions. So, and anecdotally being in classrooms, I'll say I feel like our students have a stronger grasp on fractions. Uh, geometry, we went down ten percent in geometry from the year before, but that's usually the content that's covered last. And last year, as we were learning the new curriculum, uh, we didn't get to as many of the topics in geometry as we would have liked to. Um, so our math coach and our teachers worked really hard over the summer to take everything they learned from last year and to create new pacing guides. So we're pacing ourselves much better already in the first month and a half of the school year to make sure we're covering all the content. Um, fourth graders as a cohort, um, they actually went up about fifteen percent from when they were in third grade. Um, and their average score went up seven points. So our students who were in third grade and then went to fourth grade saw gains. Um, our fifth graders as a cohort, they also went up. Um, so that's encouraging news as well. Um, so I think we did better than, you know, you would typically expect a school to do when they're making a transition between a new curriculum. Um, so I think that as teachers are getting more comfortable with it, as students are getting used to the routines of the new math curriculum, uh, we're going to continue to see positive results.
That's great. I know this is something we were not sure what we'd see, so really a testament to the math coaches and, and the team, so this is great news.
Um, some focus areas for Pine Hill this year because of the MCAS, um, in our ELA item analysis. Um, it suggests that students need more support in analyzing writing and both producing writing. Uh, so we are, literacy coach is working specifically with our third, fourth and fifth grade teachers on increasing written responses to reading. Um, we're also going to be doing some more work on analyzing writing structures and the author's intent. So we went through and we looked at the questions, questions that were saying like, well, so why did the author choose to use this word in this sentence our students struggled with? Uh, so we want to do some more analysis of writing structures and author's intent this year. Um, interesting when we're going through the math because we really dug into the math deeply. Um, our math item analysis is showing that our students are doing pretty well on procedural fluency, which is students knowing how to find the right answer on things. It's the conceptual understanding that we still need to work on improving. Um, and that has been a shift in any type of math curriculum across the state from the procedural fluency. Like I know how to calculate numbers and use formulas to I understand why nine times nine gets you to eighty-one because I can look at nine rows across and nine rows going down and I can see how that gets you to eighty-one. Um, so we're going to be working, continuing to build that conceptual understanding this year. Um, we also are going to be doing more project-based learning this year in math. Um, so students can see the real world math relevance and we think and hope that's going to help students when they're doing word problems on the exam. Uh, because they'll be able to see some of those scenarios in real life, um, with some more project-based learning. So those are our big focus areas for this year. Um, again, we have revised math pacing guides. Uh, we are going to be sprinkling in some kind of light, um, academic pieces into morning meetings and break times. Uh, so things that we want to work on related to grammar, data and geometry. Um, so this isn't saying that we're getting rid of like the fun games and the creative morning meeting. But if it's, class is going to do like a four corners activity, maybe one of the corners is a rhombus and one is a triangle or one is a parallelogram. So you're still kind of getting at some of that, uh, while having the fun. Um, and we want to continue to look at our subgroups, um, specifically, I've been talking with our coaches around uh, doing coaching cycles with our special education teachers, um, and having some more time to plan and collaborate um, with our special education teachers so we can look more specifically at our students with disabilities, um, specifically around math.
And I would imagine you can't provide any specifics because of our small numbers, but generally when you guys and the data groups looked at the subgroups, are there any trends or we kind of on par, improving? Are there, uh, obviously we'll continue focusing as you note here, but what, what can you share there?
Yeah, I need to put this graphic or something in. So if you look at something like ELA, for example, our percentage of students being exceeding went up ten percent. You have our students who aren't in the subgroups, their achievement is going up. And you have our students that are in the subgroups, their achievement is also going up, but there's still a gap in between the two groups. So we're seeing positive growth, but we're still seeing a gap in between people that are in that subgroup and aren't in that subgroup. So I think when we, we're looking to close that um, more and more, and that's what we're hoping we can do through some of these focus areas. Um, and through some of our district improvement efforts around analyzing data, um, our K through twelve district data team that we're going to be convening to look at vertical trends in data throughout the district. Um, again, with our second year reveal implementation, um, our Wynn, as we mentioned earlier, our Wynn is getting better because we're using research-based and evidence-based programs with the students. So it's not just a teacher saying like, oh, I have this worksheet that I used ten years ago. Um, they're going to the actual set pieces of curriculum that, um, are research-based to help support our students better. Um, and obviously we're in the middle right now of our ELA program review, which will make some decisions about the future of, um, our curriculum at the elementary level in terms of ELA. Happy to take any other questions or comments people have related to the MCAS.
Thank you for the, Rita. Nathaniel, anything you have?
Thank you for remembering.
No, I don't.
Okay, great, thanks. It's great news on the math. Oh, it's about, I'm sorry, it's my turn again. I was waiting for someone to get it. Next on the agenda are the financial reports, Ms. Vittori.
Yes, thank you. Um, you have your monthly warrant report, so it's all the warrants that have been processed, um, by the town since last time you met. Um, and then this is our first glance of, as to where we are in fiscal year twenty-six before we get into twenty-seven, right? Um, so I think one, um, piece that's really helpful for us to look at are the salaries because we really don't know where we are in salaries until we get right everyone back on payroll in September and start things rolling. So, uh, and we encumber all payroll that we know about at the time. So it gets, it does give us a good insight into how we're going to do operationally against the budget as far as, um, how we budgeted for personnel. So you can see there are some, uh, ins and outs, but, um, it's, if you look at the, your educator classroom, that's over about sixty-five, but we had a reduction in special ed. That was around sixty-five thousand, so as far as the largest piece of our, um, personnel staff, we are actually, if you want to look at it net, we're on budget. Um, the increases in the classroom, part of the educator budget line item included, um, addition actually probably even after once school started, but point two FTE and, um, and you guys keep going back and forth, it's MLL or ELL, so, uh, but multilingual learner educator. So we had to boost that based on the number of, size of cohort and the needs of the students. Um, and then we did have some just employee changes. As you know, we, we budget by employees, by what their salaries are. If someone leaves us, you don't necessarily always bring back someone who costs the exact same amount. So there are always some fluctuations when we have changes. Um, but the good news is that I think we're, we're looking to operate right at budget. We will continue to see substitutes go down, obviously, and custodial services for any overtime. So those two numbers will continue to run away to seventy-two thousand, but we should be fine with that. It's really early on the expenditure side to say a whole lot. A few things that we're over budgeted on is we're estimating utilities and there is an uptick in the um, delivery costs of electricity, something that, you know, it's, it's, it's really continuing to increase. When we did the budget last year, it wasn't something that we anticipated, so, um, we'll look at that for fiscal year twenty-seven. And transportation is, um, really an increase in some, um, special ed transportation in, in district um, that we're seeing some increases for. So that is why you're seeing the negative in transportation services.
And Dawn, is that an increase in the cost that we budgeted last year or for student needs, somebody's going further than we expected, like?
So this is in district, so it.
Oh, so additional students needed transportation.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And we typically don't build into the budget anything for that because so, um, we were over last year too, but it's just one of those numbers that we try to absorb versus building into the, to the budget. Um, on the out of district side, which this is where there's changes in placements and the miles driven impacts. Um, and it has impacted, obviously this year we're over budgeting transportation. But we had budgeted for thirteen placements and at this point in time we have fourteen. Um, so our tuition costs are over budgeted by about a hundred forty thousand and placement changes and then that one extra placement has our transportation over just under eighty thousand. Uh, so we, we are carrying about a two hundred thousand dollar deficit in the operating budget. Um, which right now it looks like we're fine because we have all these other expenses. Um, but as you read in your reports, um, we probably will dip into our circuit breaker fund to pick up more of those expenditures, um, and we have the capacity to do that. So that is why we always try to hold on to as much circuit breaker as we're allowed to be allowed to to give us that safety net so that we don't have to go back to the town and ask for supplemental reserve when we encounter this, but that we can sort of take care of ourselves. Um, and so we just finalized circuit breaker. You will see that Sherborne is getting about just under five hundred thousand dollars from last year. So that's reimbursed, but that we're getting in twenty-six based on our expenditures in twenty-five. Um, in addition, we had carried forward about two hundred thousand dollars of, um, funding left from last year. We did some prepays and then we were allowed to keep, there's a lot of finagling that we do, um, with the number. So we are in a really good position, um, to be able to, um, uh, move some of the money, some of the placements from general fund into circuit breaker. Um, so that will, we'll try to end the year as close as we can to zero, but that's, that will allow us not to have any impact on your in-district budget. Um, and again, as we, as we talked about at the joint meeting, um, you know, your budget scenario from out of district will change quite a bit actually when we start doing the twenty-seven budgets because a lot of your activity is going to come up to the region. And you'll be just looking at the students, um, pre-K through five that are sitting, um, there. Just to, you know, give you, um, insight, the circuit breaker money is made up of Sherborne, like just K, pre-K to five was like ninety-six thousand. And the region piece was like four hundred thousand.
But the cost will also move to the region too, like overages or whatever. Okay, so it should even out, but we'll go from seeing lots to just a little bit.
Your overall budget and take a little bit of the risk away. But, because we've always only been able to hold into our circuit breaker at the town of Sherborne, what the town of Sherborne gets in circuit breaker. So that, that piece will, um, you know, ebb and flow a little bit differently than it does right now. Um, so as I said, we'll make adjustments in the coming months as we see what happens. But rest assured, we have some funds on our own to take care of that without having to either ask the town for supplemental reserves or have them dip into their, um, stabilization for specialized. for specialized.
That's great.
Any questions on the monthly financials? Okay, I can just report that the library and the cafe HVAC units are up and running. So we had those two days, I think, two, two weeks ago where it was eighty degrees. So they were up and running and the installation for the other unit in the auditorium is scheduled for like mid to late October. So hopefully soon we'll be able to sign off and complete that project and have huge improvements, I think, to the Pine Hill building.
That's great. Thank you. Next on the agenda are the discussion items. And tonight we have the fiscal year twenty-six budget development guidance discussion.
So your next meeting in December actually will be for the fiscal year twenty-seven budget. So we always give school committees, I know, right? We always give school committees the opportunity before we roll out version one point O, if there's any, you know, areas of concern you have, you know, it's based on what's in your purview, any guidance that you may have so that we can take that into consideration when we're building.
So things in the past have been, you know, coming out of the pandemic, obviously, social, emotional learning and support and interventions, you know, to, to get kids caught up. And I think we're seeing the results of all of that work. But if there's anything that you feel is a need right now or something that you want us to make a priority, you're welcome to mention it tonight or let me know in the next month or so.
Great. I know, Bill, you had a couple of things I emailed out to you guys, so if anybody else has anything, but if you want to.
I asked Becca two questions, just one about technology and infrastructure. What is the trend going, twenty-six, twenty-seven? And then the other question was, in the negotiations with the union, I'm assuming there's a low end and a high end and depending on where it lands, how does that affect the budget? Because this is my first time going through that, so I just didn't know how that all worked.
Yeah, so we'll, when we build the budget for twenty-seven, which we have actually already started, every employee rolls into that budget at exactly where they are in fiscal year twenty-six because we assume that we don't have any contracts to forecast off of. And so it could be that we stay exactly where we are, right? Then we will put a reserve in the budget for an amount that we agreed upon between the schools and the towns as to our capability of what we can afford. And that is for every single employee.
Got it.
So even those, even those of us that aren't on a union contract or an association contract, we put everybody in there. Therefore, it's, you know, becomes a number that's a little bit harder to decipher necessarily. So when you see your budget, it's called the reserve for legal, I think we call it reserve for settlements, you know, reserve for negotiation. There'll be a big number that sits there and that's salary increase for everybody.
Got it.
And so that's, that's sort of how we have to do it in these odd years.
Yeah, sure, makes sense. Because you can't have a number sitting there.
Exactly, exactly. And then technology, obviously with Brandon coming on board, you know, the, every staff member got brand new laptops this fall. We're starting a lease versus buy program and to help smooth the, sort of the financial needs. And so for staff, we're putting them on a four-year lease. We bought tons of technology with our COVID money. And so it's now time to start looking at replacement for our student devices. And so that's something that we're working on and trying to decide, you know, do we buy, do we lease, what do we do for, you know, the different types of devices that we have in the elementary school? So you definitely will probably see an increase in the budget for some piece of that as we're starting to having to start with places.
Awesome, thank you.
And we made a lot of investments in infrastructure over the past couple of years. For example, over the past summer, all the Wi-Fi access points Pine Hill were upgraded. So infrastructure, I think, we're only good as actual devices.
Devices, thank you.
That's great.
Thanks, Becca.
Absolutely, thanks. I think the items on my mind are, you know, continuing to support the rollout of the math curriculum. I know that's obviously only been year one, so having the, I think this was the first year we had two math, I don't know, reading coaches. There was something we updated.
Maybe there's a share.
Right, somebody went back and forth, okay.
And now every elementary has.
Has their own, so.
Added that when we rolled out the.
That's been great. I hope we can continue that. I think, obviously, social, emotional learning, we're seeing the benefits, but let's not take our foot off the gas there. Brandon's been a really excellent addition, just bringing a new lens, so excited to see that continue. And I know we talk about this every year, I won't be here next year to say it most likely, but buses, buses are hard. I know there's been some opportunities that Ms. Gelling's just had to place people or adults on the buses here and there, continuing to offer that support and flexibility. However, you guys were able to do that, I think, is, is really important. It can be just a really tough location for, for kids. So I think those are, that's what I would add.
Yeah, I think Bus Sponsors is on my list. And I mean, this is a big one, but I know at some point you guys were talking about the building itself. I've heard there's teachers in closets, like they're running out of room. So I don't know what, if there's short-term options versus longer-term options of just having more rooms.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the room situation is such that, Ms. Probably, we're using the space differently, right? Because we used to have more students at Pine Hill, but interestingly enough, when we did the whole building assessment study, based on our enrollments, we'd actually would rebuild a school, it would be approved for square footage less than we have.
Really?
Yeah. So part of it's just looking, are we using all the space, like, you know, what, who do we have assigned where and such? But literally, you know, you, both elementaries used to have, I'm going to say almost like a substantial number of students in the building itself. It's just our programming has changed to use up some of that space, but from a, from a DSE, you know, standpoint in the Massachusetts Building Association, looking at that, based on our students, they told us your square footage was actually good.
And the quality of the infrastructure is also fine as far as how old the building is, yeah?
It is, yeah.
Interesting.
I guess that's good news.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, right, we would be pivoting much faster, but we've actually got a pretty good.
It sounds like it's a staff versus kids issue. Like the kids are sufficient, but the staff doesn't all have potentially enough room. So yeah, maybe rejigging and figuring out things, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're in good hands with Allison in terms of creative thinking, so we'll continue to work on that and think about the long year, long-term plan, which usually takes about ten years to either renovate or, you know, build new stuff. There's a superintendent that I, I collaborate with quite often and he's been through fee building projects, so he's willing to do some consulting with us about how to get this off the ground.
Yeah, that's great. The one thing that I, you know, I think we do a really good job with like IEPs and support on those, on that side. I just wonder if we have an opportunity on the other side for kids you're seeing who are in the higher percentages to have options for kind of.
Extension and.
Extension, yeah, whatever the words would be for that, yeah.
Yep.
I know that was a big piece of why we selected this math program, right? That there was a lot of flexibility. So I would, is it safe to assume that that is something we're thinking about when we're on the sort of cyclical curriculum evaluation?
Yes, and I think that we didn't get to do as much of it last year as we'd hoped because we were just learning it. I think we've already talked about a lot more opportunities this year for some of the STEM connections that are going to provide enrichment opportunities. And I think our November early release day, we're going to be talking about that as a full staff, so.
Thank you.
Well, if you have other ideas or input, feel free to send them our way. Thank you.
So a little bit of a, a change in schedule just because of the way that Veterans Day fell in the calendar and Thanksgiving, so your budget will be December ninth. So normally you do it before Thanksgiving, but we get bumped to the meeting after the region.
We'll be very productive.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much. Next on the agenda are the consent items. Ms. Vittori or Lieutenant McCoy, would you like to speak to any of these items?
You have your approval of your fiscal year twenty-six grants, so what you have is a summary of what we received in fiscal year twenty-six. And then I included the exhibit from our budget last year that sort of talked about what we had in twenty-five and how we use the money because it's all still relevant. So that was all good news that all the grants came through. And I'll just answer the question because it's come up a lot, even with the government shutdown, all the money for our fiscal year twenty-six grants was already given to the state last year. And so there is no concern with, you know, being reimbursed and having access to those funds right now.
And you probably don't have much to offer here, but with the shutdown and the dismissal of the special education department and stuff like that, do you, I know so much of that comes through DSE, are we expecting impacts or will watch the news?
Yeah, no, I don't think so in terms of the funding for this year and then moving forward. I mean, by law, we have to support students who are at risk, which is Title I, and students who have learning disabilities or any sort of disabilities don't foresee that changing, you know, whether there's changes in, you know, Title II or Title IV as to be determined. You know, for good or for bad, our Title II and Title IV funding is minimal from the government. So, you know, if there's shifts that we need to do internally, luckily, our district can handle that. I worry about other districts who can't.
Yeah.
I think the impact of specialized things that are happening federally are more around compliance and oversight rather than funding.
Okay.
So I think DSE is very good at that oversight of us in Massachusetts and other states. I think there might be some other impacts.
Correct. And then just in terms of the, you know, the gift from the Brookline Bird Club, we always appreciate community partners supporting our learning efforts. And as we know, the third grade focuses a lot on birds and wildlife. And so we have some tips that we could build for our students and, you know, my tenth grader and twelfth graders still talk about their bird units in third grade.
Yeah, I'm always surprised that they have a whole unit on birds.
That's all the whole year.
Intentional that they're in that wing that's like in the woods basically.
Probably. They can go right out that side door to see the birds.
So thank you always to those who donate for our kids.
Great, great. Well, I will read each one aloud if there are any questions or anything like that. We can go through that. And then if in favor, we can approve all the items with a single vote, which we'll do by a roll call vote. The consent items are approval of minutes, September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, approval of fiscal year twenty-six grants, and accept the gift from the Brookline Bird Club. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May I could be also moved?
Thank you. I have a second?
Hold on a second.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Nathaniel, how do you vote?
I vote yay.
Thank you. Bill, how about you?
Yay.
Kate?
Yay.
Megga?
Yay.
Becca?
Yay.
Any further discussion?
Nay.
All right, I should have, I did that backwards. The motion carries. Okay, great. And then in your packets, you'll find informational items on the October enrollment report, which I always find fascinating.
We have seven more students than we did last year.
Well, and grade four is so big comparatively.
Yeah, it's huge. It's our group.
I, yeah, no wonder they're so chaotic and lovely.
And in total, we're just one above our, we're one above our projection. Might have a couple swings in the grades, but.
It's pretty impressive.
Science works.
Whatever that works. How do you get data on, like, I know you do the pre, like, just any, is it just the census data, like a vibe on what's coming up?
The census, yes, from, from the town. And then Dawn does a great job at looking at trends over the last three and five years and, and one year to, to kind of see what happens. And then we make a ballpark estimate as to what next year might look like based on what's happened.
Yeah.
I guess the only question I had when I was looking at this is that the, the number of Boston students is relatively small per grade. Is that based on what we have available? Is that based on interest from Boston? Like, how are those numbers defined?
It's both. You know, we typically try to have at least two students from Boston in each grade level so that they have those buddies before and after school. And sometimes it's that we didn't have the applications or sometimes families make decisions to leave. We do take students after kindergarten. So Ms. Monique is often looking to fill spots over time and it's based on, again, the availability of applications and the interest in coming to Dover Sherburne.
Got it.
But we do have a cap.
A cap, yeah, okay.
And you've got to spread it across all four schools.
Oh, interesting, yeah, that makes sense.
Because it's managed great.
Got it, manage that.
You've got a lot, you've got two elementary schools and then six through twelve here.
Got it, okay.
And the number's been about the same since I was like the Medco chair. So it's been around like eleven, twelve-ish.
Yeah, district-wide, it's ranged between like forty and forty-nine. And now DSE has become more involved in the Medco process and so they put a cap on our funding from year to year. So we have that, that bucket to work within.
Got it, yeah, okay.
If I was, I, I heard we were limited to one bus when it came down to the number of students that were there for all four schools. Is that still correct?
No, it has nothing to do with the busing, really. Because the bus holds more students. So it's, it's just a factor of, I don't know how Medco decides, but they have, you know, because the bus could hold more.
Yeah, I think, and it's also, you know, being of a small school district where, you know, as you've seen over time, and especially with your fourth graders, the number of students in one grade, if it swings one or two, you could add an entirely new section. Which is another hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a teacher. So we, we fill pockets where we can and without trying to, you know, need to build a larger Pine Hill school.
So when you look at grade four and seventy, seventy-four people and is, do you already have to look at staffing or have that already? Do you have to change staffing for grade five next year?
Yeah, so during the budget process, we'll be looking at all those kids filling up and where the sections will move and then.
So you'll a lot of times see the number of sections change year to year.
Yeah.
In our schools because that.
Yeah, like the K, the kindergarten class is so small.
But they're anticipating from what they're telling us that the K is going to be big here.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, those are the COVID babies, right? Five years ago? Six years ago?
No, this year is COVID. My son's in kindergarten, he was born in twenty-twenty.
Okay, so the twenty-twenty-one people.
Everything we blame on COVID.
I just, yeah, I know, I'm like, PTSD. Okay, that's interesting. Yeah, I know in past budget conversations, we've been like, oh, do you need to add a class? Is it an additional EA? And like thinking creatively about class sizes and, you know, there, as I understand it, multiple options for providing additional adult supervision as opposed to just adding a new classroom. But finding that balance is something we, was that last year or two years ago? We talked a lot about that.
You'll be an expert on that by June though.
That's great.
Great.
Does the pre-K have any, like, it's a different target or, I know it's a different.
So it's based on a ratio of the students who, who need special education support and then having peer mentors. And so if we have a lot of students who, who need special ed support, we might need to have two classrooms in order to meet that ratio. But in the past two years, it's only been one.
So we have, we have, we have pre-K in our school because to be able to accommodate students on IEPs. So it's not, it's not really open, like you need to have IEP students in our pre-K program because it's an integrated pre-K.
Okay.
So it's not like a regular pre-K program that's in the public, in the private worlds.
Okay.
It's therefore a reason to provide special ed and we do tuition students in because you need to have the.
Typical peers, yeah.
Yeah.